Advocate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 13, 2024 to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Baker Street in New Brunswick. Item number one, roll call please.
Mrs. Caldwell. Mrs. Mediza Hernandez. Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Olise. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Verella. Mr. Adoin. Ms. Abilia. We have a call.
Thank you. Moving to item number two, the plaque. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Moving to item number three, we have an announcement that I'm going to turn to Ms. Viallona.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a board vacancy announcement. We would like to announce that Mr. Bernito Ortiz has submitted his notice to the New Brunswick Board President and Secretary, indicating that after 27 years of service, he will be stepping down as board member effective tomorrow, Wednesday, November 20. The board has up to 60 days to fill this vacancy, and resumes are to be addressed to the board president. Thank you.
Thank you for the announcement. This is also, there is also a reminder that the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, December 17, 2024, beginning at 7:00 p.m. here at New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. Moving to item number four, we have presentations, and we have a special presentation. We have... How do we put together two of the most important words, right, in saying thank you, and with that, 27 years of service? So, Mr. Bernito Ortiz, a father of three, an Air Force veteran, and an educational warrior, thank you for your 27 years of service, for showing your love for your community by providing equitable actions of purpose to make sure that New Brunswick gets a place that people are proud of and that kids are proud of. So, we do have... We do have a plaque that we will like to read. "In recognition of 27 years of dedicated service and commitment to New Brunswick Public Schools, Mr. Bernito Ortiz will forever be grateful for the inspiration you ignited in the students of New Brunswick and your exceptional leadership in your entire community." He's been a member since 1984 to now, 2020, for 27 years of service. So, on behalf of the community and the children of New Brunswick, we can have him sit down.
Thank you.
As Mr. Ortiz is sharing some words with a few of the cabinets and individuals here, remember the first time I was in one of the meetings with Mr. Ortiz, and somebody was talking about not New Brunswick being a deadline, and Mr. Ortiz said, "We don't want them." And that really resonated and set the tone for how much he loves New Brunswick and how much he loves their children. So, enjoy your retirement. We'll be here. It's a call call away.
Let me just say a couple of words before he speaks. Mr. Ortiz, I just mentioned a couple of things. I just quickly, you know, jotted down some things that came to my head as we opened. And, you know, since I've been here for the past 10 years, some words come to me. As an individual, you're genuine, but you truly care about the children. And yet, I'm definitely invested in the community. As I learn to, you know, learn alongside you, just a couple of things that I take away. First off, you always need to know your current events because you know your current events. And if you pose a question and you don't know your current events, it's telling. So, knowing your current events, knowing what's happening in the educational field, we had some great conversations, and there's a lot of times that I have to go back and do my own research because you pointed out facts that I really didn't know about, and I appreciated that learning alongside you. The other thing is, I think I've taken some of your qualities. You know, you can sit in meetings for a while, but at a point, you don't really want to entertain all the nonsense, and you just want to get right to the point. And that said a lot about you. And I really admire that about you, you know, using our time effectively, efficiently, and doing away with all the fluff. Let's get to the core of the work. And whatever conversation we had, you will follow up. I don't care if it's one year, two years later, when I thought you forgot about some ideas and... Remember we spoke about that? Where are we with that? And, you know, follow up as a leader, following up as a leader is one of our, I would say, struggles because we are always dealing with competing priorities. But if we don't follow up in terms of what we want to accomplish, then what's the sense of doing? So, keeping us on point and always coming back to all... I don't know how you remember all those conversations, but it just says to me that you remember them because they're so important to you, and they're so important to the communities. So, I'm going to take that along with me. And just to close, just, you're all about always building and creating a better system for the children. It's not being complacent. It's not being like, "We made it. What else can we do? What else can we do for our children to make things better?" And you always come with that type of embodiment and love. You lead through humor all the time with jokes, but it may be many of us uncomfortable because we don't know if you're serious or not, right? And I appreciate that. So, wishing you well. I know you will continue to be an advocate. And of course, our doors are always open for you. Thank you.
First off, let me just thank Dr. Johnson for those kind words. And also thank the board and its administration. It's been a pleasure working 27 years with you guys and a variety of other guys that have left, but always enjoyed working with. And, you know, I hope that you will continue the work that we've done and we've said and attain those things that we want to do for the kids in the city of New Brunswick. You know, you're always on my mind. I'm constantly thinking zebras. And you know that I'm a big zebra fan and everything I wear, so zebra, just about. So, again, I'd like to thank this board. I'd like to thank the administration. You guys have been great. It's been a wonderful 27 years of working with you, experiencing, learning, and it's been enjoyable. So, thank you all very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. However, of course, we had, you know, you were very instrumental in making sure, you know, we created a jazz band. I heard that you want a mariachi band now, and you keep pressing there. We wanted the jazz band to come out today. However, the jazz band season is just beginning. However, we do have a little surprise for you.
Man, horns up! One, two, one, two, three, four, one.
Sometimes we look at the applause, and I just, we didn't have the applause to recognize for the work that she has brought. She has turned this man, I believe this is the third year now, and literally this is the part that she has put into it. At the mercy of the street, I publicly just thank you for the work that you continue to do. And I'm sure Bernito want to say thank you to you.
Thank you, Chen. We really appreciate your support. That was, it's been done because of state's great minds and music education to make these things possible. And you've opened doors to children to get them on that, you know, we're on the state stage. We competed in state competitions, and hopefully the next step is that national stage. And I'm really excited with your support to see where our programs are going to go. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And I also have to add that I have an Instagram page, that if you see that, besides the learning, how much fun they're actually having, so. And keeping with high spirits, we also have another presentation, Sustainable New Jersey for Schools 2024 Awards Recognition. So, passing on to Frank.
Thank you. So, just as I get up here, my computer eyes are self-off. In the second, that was a tough act to follow, too. So, good evening. Tonight, we're also celebrating an incredible achievement in sustainability. Last month, at the New Jersey for the School Boards Conference in Atlantic City, all of our schools were formally recognized by Sustainable Jersey for Schools with the highest level of certification in sustainability, which is Silver Status. Yeah, it should have gold. They don't have that yet, but if they do, we'll get that. Sustainability Jersey for Schools is a statewide certification program that guides New Jersey schools to adopt sustainable best practices. Since 2014, they have provided resources and recognition for schools that commit to environmentally responsible and impactful learning experiences. In the past, our schools have obtained Bronze Status. And last year, we made the lofty goal of obtaining the highest level in Silver across the board in all of our schools. Just to expand a little bit on that, Bronze Status, which is what we had in all our schools a couple of years back, was primarily reached by facility goals, coming out of the facility department, LED lighting, energy-efficient HVAC systems, solar power, green cleaning, recyclables. And that was enough against the Bronze Status. But when we decided to go to Silver, it really took it to the next level exponentially. It became a really a team effort that we were going to get there, involving the schools, the school administration, students, and involved getting persistent practices infused into the curriculum, making students part of the process. And again, without this team effort, we would have not even been able to get to that level. It's with great pleasure tonight, I can say that we achieved that goal and we see Silver Status across the board. Board of Education and District Administration would like to extend our heartfelt thank you to everybody who helped in achieving this possible, making this possible. A special thank you to Mr. Renee and Miss, can't believe it, Miss Renee McMillan for being a great help. She played a critical role in the extensive application process and managing that and making staying on top of all of us and getting us across the finish line. So, Renee is only fitting enough to ask you to come up here and join us and help me hand out the awards tonight. As I mentioned, all of the schools in New Brunswick received the highest level of certification Silver. Some of our newer schools, such as B.B., will be receiving a plaque today, which is their first time back. More of our older schools who had the Bronze before already have the plaque, and they'll just be receiving the Silver platters that they can add to their existing plaque. So, without further ado, Renee would be let up.
AC Bridgestone Elementary School, would you please come up? Laquita de Valente Community School, Lincoln Elementary School, Livingston Elementary School, Lloyd Sterling Community School, McKinley Community School, McKinley Kindergarten Center, Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts, Roosevelt Elementary School, Woodrow Wilson Elementary School, New Brunswick Middle School, Pathways Middle School, New Brunswick Adult Learning Center, New Brunswick Health Sciences Technology High School, New Brunswick High School, and New Brunswick P-Tech. Congratulations to you all.
Okay, we're not over yet. As I mentioned earlier, we were formally recognized by Sustainable Jersey for Schools in New Brunswick at the Conference of Atlantic City. It was an amazing feeling to be at the award ceremony and witness the Brunswick's overwhelming sweep of the awards. We don't want to be too, so we left a few awards on the table for other districts. But we did pretty much clean house. We also were cheered on by the board here, and I don't want to name any names, but some board member may just be retiring, was shouting, "Go zebras!" from that hour, from the back of their room, trading a lot of ruckus. So, with that, I want to move on to some other awards that we received. Digital Star Awards, given to schools that embrace digital learning practices and show commitment as evidenced in culture and in the classroom. Digital Star Schools documented their successful digital learning strategies, leadership, learning practices, and technology access to students. We received awards for three of our schools. First one is Laquita Valente School. Can you come up here and receive an award? McKinley Community School. New Brunswick High School. Okay, we're almost done. I have a few other people still here on stage. And the reason for that is Sustainable Jersey for School also has a Champions Award. Champions Awards given in three categories, elementary, middle, and high school, and that's statewide. So, the school that has the highest points category in sustainable practice actions statewide received the award, either elementary, middle, or high. So, we got two of the three. We have a little room for improvement for next year, but I'd like to say to our Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts, congratulations, and hand them their award. As part of the presentation in Atlantic City, they also, the school did a slide or a video to showcase what they did. So, I'd like to play that now too for the Paul Robeson School for the Arts.
Hey, we're the great team from Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts in S. One. We're all about making sustainability cool. We're super excited to be awarded the Sustainability Makes Sense Award.
Our student leaders are leading the charge for sustainable food and fresh produce here at Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts.
Our favorite project, it's this amazing school garden. We grow fresh produce that goes straight to our cafeteria meals. Healthy, fresh, and bone by us. Does it get any better than that?
Not only does this provide us with access to healthy food, but by growing our own. We are promoting sustainability in our local community.
Not only are we learning how to grow our own food, but we're also helping the planet by reducing food miles and minimizing waste. Everything comes full circle, literally, because we compost the leftovers and use them to nourish our gardens.
A huge shout out to our school leaders for supporting us and making this possible. Without them, none of this would have been grown.
Hi, it's Ms. Barto and Ms. Masanobu, the advisors for the Environmental Science Club. We want to thank everyone who made this collaboration possible.
We make sustainability make sense!
And last, if you haven't figured out, New Brunswick High School, out of all the high schools in the state that participate in the program, received the highest points. I'd like to present the award, Champions Award for High School Category to Mr. Rustnik and New Brunswick High School. Video, yes. Video process.
At New Brunswick High School, wellness is a way of life. From physical activity to mental health, our focus is on nourishing the student body as a whole.
Wellness isn't just about physical health. It also means nurturing our minds. That's why we offer mindfulness workshops, meditation sessions, an essential tool to help students manage stress and prioritize self-care.
Our dedication to student wellness features our brand new fitness area designed for students to stay active, build strength, and cultivate healthy habits. Here, movement becomes a part of daily life.
Physical activity is essential to well-being, whether it be through outdoor activities, sports, or in our new fitness area. Students stay energized and connected to their bodies.
Our students are at the forefront of pioneering our sustainability efforts, but none of this could be possible without our green team leading the way.
I want to express my sincere gratitude for our high school staff, administration, and the Board of Education for your unwavering support of our school health and wellness initiatives. Your dedication to fostering a healthy environment for our students, both physically and mentally, has made a tremendous impact on our school community.
By promoting physical and mental health, we're building a community of strength, resilience, and well-being.
Together, we're creating a brighter, healthier future.
Our school, our world is learning.
Thank you all again for this amazing effort. Looking forward to next year. Thank you.
We have achieved that highest level of sustainability, Sustainability Jersey for Schools Certification at the silver level. The recognition highlights the district's commitment to sustainability and positions our district as models of sustainability and excellence. And as we see that if anything is going to be sustainable, we always have to include the children, right? So to that end, all of our schools have achieved the Sustainable New Jersey certifications and testament to the motivation and consistent efforts of our educators, our principals. Thank you, Ms. McMillan. And thank you to Wishy here, I will see her. This just set it on from working with the schools and creating the videos that were that it was about a two-hour award ceremony that we had. I saw your face up there, Emily, as well, in the videos. So it really, I mean, to say that we were saying, "Go zebras," we really were the cheerleaders to say how we worked and we can see in New Jersey, particularly New Brunswick, be highlighted and have the platform for what sustainable New Jersey would look like inside our school. So thank you. Moving to item number five, the minutes for October. Can I please have a motion for October fifteen, twenty twenty-four, month board meeting minutes?
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Verella?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Upstair number meetings, please.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number six, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Aubrey A. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. As of November twenty twenty-four, we enrolled eight thousand nine hundred and forty-four students. We had five cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. There were a hundred and twenty-four suspicions for the month of October. Our staff attendance was at ninety-four percent and our student attendance at ninety-two percent. November has been an exciting month filled with celebrations, activities, and events that showcase the vibrant spirit of our schools and community. And I'd like to share a few with you, even though they remain. Just wanted to point out a couple. We were honored. We honored the great men and women who served our country this Veterans Day, the New Brunswick High School marching band, and the J R O T C proudly participated in the city's parade, paying tribute to our nation heroes and expressing our deepest gratitude for their service and sacrifice. Students at Laquita Valente Community School and Lloyd Sterling Community School recently concluded their thrilling soccer World Cup games. These exciting matches brought together students, families, and staff for a spirited celebration of teamwork, skill, and school pride. Our high school sports banquet was a light to remember. We celebrated the dedication, perseverance, and achievements of our talented student athletes. Congratulations to all our athletes on an incredible season, and thank you for making us proud both on and off the field. Also, this month, the last week, we honored the achievements of our New Brunswick High School graduating class during their senior convocation. It was a heartfelt celebration of their journey thus far and an opportunity to wish them success as they prepare for their next chapter. And I must say, I was really thrilled to see the amount of parents who came out to this event. Congratulations to our seniors, and I'm looking forward to seeing you on graduation day. Additionally, Health Science Technology High School will hold its senior convocation this Thursday, November twenty-first. We look forward to celebrating their hard work, the dedication, and accomplishments of this outstanding group of students as they prepare to embark on their next journey. A special thank you to Rutgers University for hosting our Little School Student for Recess Day. Students had an amazing time watching a basketball game and participating in fun activities. It was an inspiring and unforgettable experience for our future athletes. And this past Saturday, on November sixteenth, we held our wellness clinic, offering COVID-19 and flu vaccines to keep our school community healthy as we head into the winter season. Families, students, and staff also have access to valuable health resources. And if you missed it, our next clinic will be held on Saturday, December fourteenth, and we encourage everyone to take this opportunity to prioritize their health. Also on Saturday, we were proud to host Ed Camp New Jersey Unconference. This dynamic professional development was brought with educators across the entire state who came here to New Brunswick to learn together, to share ideas, to collaborate, and to learn new strategies for their profession. And lastly, as Thanksgiving draws near, we extend our heartfelt appreciation to our students, families, and staff for your dedication, hard work, and unwavering support. This season reminds us of the power of community. And we are truly grateful for the opportunity to work together in creating a nurturing and successful environment in our schools. Wish everyone a joyful, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Moving to item number seven. Oh, sorry. Motion to accept the Superintendent's Report.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Verella?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now moving to item number seven, the student representative report, Ms. Emily Cruz-Mamiehan.
Good evening, my name is Emily Cruz, and I'll be presenting the student representative report. The fall sports banquet was on November thirteenth. We celebrated all the achievements and hard work of our athletes. We had some all-division awards. Football, Chase Marasen. Boy's soccer, Michael Salgado. Girl's soccer, Catherine Velasquez, Yatsiri Sanchez, Lisette Jimenez, and Mariales Montos. Girls tennis, Christina Alonso. And girls volleyball, Natalie Abila. Holly Short won the Coach of the Year Cross-Country Right Division. She runs with a student who is blind. Senior convocation was on November fourteenth. We have dinner served and had a motivational speeches by Ayea Marino, who was a public speaker, and Roger Velasquez, our class president. Senior portraits are this week, and everyone is excited about it, including me. This concludes the student representative report.
Thank you, Emily. Moving to item number eight, the Facilities Committee Report, Mrs. Sunny Medina Hernandez is chairperson.
The Facilities Committee meeting was held on November thirteenth at five p.m. All our schools have had their LED signage installed. There are few adjustments we still have left to make, but currently all our school signs are operational. We discussed the possibility of improvements and expansion of our playgrounds at McKinley and McKinley K Center. I will update you as we get further in the process. We also discussed the installation schedule of the new science labs at New Brunswick High School and Pathways Middle School. The possibility exists that the high school labs may be able to be installed over the winter break. We are still finalizing the schedule and will update you next month. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Moving to item ninety, athletic committee report, Ms. Asher Popla.
Good evening. So for the athletic committee report, the fall season has come to a close, and we would like to recognize the accomplishments of all our teams. Boys soccer, girls soccer, and girls volleyball all qualified for the state tournament, with the boys soccer team having a thrilling victory over South Brunswick in overtime. For the county tournaments, the boys varsity soccer team were quarterfinalists. Boys and girls diving soccer team made it to the semifinals, and the freshman boys soccer team made it all the way to county finals. Our boys and girls cross-country teams finished their year at the county championships, where Emily Lopez broke the school record for a five K, running at twenty-two minutes and forty-seven seconds. On the middle school level, our boys soccer team finished with a record of twelve and one, and the girls soccer teams finished seven, one, and three. The middle school football team made the playoffs but fell to Franklin Middle School, but finished with a record of three to two. Registration is now open for all winter sports, including wrestling, basketball, cheerleading, indoor track, bowling, and esports, with over two hundred signups already. Tryouts will begin next week, and girls tennis won the GMC Sportsmanship Award. Thank you.
Do we have a motion for a re-intervial? Do we have a?
Yes.
Can we please have a motion for a re-intervial?
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Verella?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number ten, the Curriculum and Policy Committee Report, by Mrs. Diana Solis, chairperson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum and Policy Committee met in a repertoire. They included a presentation on NJQSA. There was an evaluation and district improvement plan presented by Mrs. Virginia Hill, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, the initial review placement and interim review placement scores for the district are as follows. The initial placement on nine-one-two thousand twenty-three, the instruction and program seventy-five percent, fiscal management one hundred percent, governance ninety-five percent, operations ninety-five percent, and personnel one hundred percent. The interim placement on ten-one-two thousand twenty-four, instruction and program seventy-one percent, fiscal management one hundred percent, governance ninety-five percent, operations ninety-five percent, and personnel one hundred percent. The district will continue to implement the district improvement plan that was revised for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year with additional strategies to address graduation rate and chronic absenteeism. There was also a preschool operational plan and enrollment update presented by Ms. Melissa Barisi, Director of Early Childhood in our district. The district, in partnership with the National Institute for Early Educational Research, developed a survey to help understand parents' reasons for enrolling or not enrolling their children in the New Brunswick Public School preschool program during the academic year of twenty-three, twenty-four, based on the responses from New Brunswick Public School parents with children in pre-K and kindergarten. The district's next steps will be to, one, strengthen current partnerships with hospitals, clinics, and Early Childhood Advisory Council; two, open houses for all preschool and kindergarten classes at the end of August to provide classroom visits as well as an opportunity to meet and greet teachers, partnering district community agent slash family liaisons with the pre-K provider, family workers, and the district community parent involvement specialists to provide a parent university session on preparing for the transition to pre-K and build on the development of school-parent relationships. Lastly, revise website and early childhood communication materials to provide information on toileting and diapering, informing parents on how that is supported in the program, as students do not need to be toilet-trained to attend any pre-K location. The CNI newsletters were Digital Citizenship Week for October fourteenth through the eighteenth, and the National Arts and Humanities Month newsletters. All the resolutions that we've covered were reviewed and recommended for approval. All resolutions are in the consent agenda. The policies and regulations, there were two that were covered during the meeting, P O one four one, board member number and term. Bylaw guide zero one four one addresses the number and term of board members and the term of board members filling a board vacancy. The number of board members as well as the years of the term has remained the same for New Brunswick Board of Education. And the second one was R two two zero zero, curriculum content, which was a mandated policy, has been revised to remove a list referencing numerous New Jersey student learning standards. This list did not include all the standards, and since NJSLA standards are continually changing, it is appropriate to remove reference to specific NJSLA standards. That, Madam President, concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Moving to item number eleven, the Student Support Services Committee, Mr. Ivan Adorno is chairperson.
Thank you. Post-election periods can be a stressful time for many of our families, as political changes may bring uncertainty or heightened emotions. During such times, it's important for families to seek support, to manage stress, and ensure their well-being. MBPS Mental Health Support Staff have resources for staff, students, and families during this transition with a focus on...
this transition with a focus on mental health, resilience, and communication. We highly encourage our school community to seek out these resources as needed. Additionally, as we approach Thanksgiving, it's a perfect time to reflect on the things that we are grateful for, but why stop there? Practicing gratitude every day can have a profound impact on your mental health. Taking a moment each day to appreciate the small and big blessings in your life helps shift your focus away from stress and negativity. This simple habit can improve mood, reduce anxiety, and foster resilience, making it easier to navigate life's challenges. So while Thanksgiving reminds us to give thanks, let's carry the spirit of gratitude with us throughout the year, nurturing a more positive and peaceful mindset. MBPS wishes everyone a peaceful and happy Thanksgiving. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adorno. Moving to item number twelve, the public comments.
Yes, Madam President. First signed up to speak tonight is Mr. Charlie Cradwell.
Good evening, Board. Charlie Cradwell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'll start by saying thank you, Mr. Ortiz, for your service and best wishes to you on the occasion of your retirement. I got to agree with the superintendent about the importance of being knowledgeable about current events. It's one of the reasons that we started New Brunswick today. I want all of you to remember that for the thousands of public school families, plus faculty, staff, alumni, and anyone who cares about the future of our city, current events are what is happening right here in this room, in these meetings. And tonight's a great example of why the Board should make video recordings of its meetings to capture moments like the terrific performance from March Band and to proactively publish those recordings of the meetings. I'm not asking for much. In fact, I'm just asking you to catch up and do what most other Middlesex County school districts have been doing for years. Great that the building we're in was recognized as a leader in sustainability, but why then isn't the district a leader in transparency? And I'm glad I could be here tonight with my camera to document this meeting, and I'll post the recording to our YouTube channel, New Brunswick Today, and I'll continue to do so as often as I possibly can, but I truly hope that the Board will follow our lead and begin making its own recordings of these meetings and publishing them. Is there any reason why you wouldn't do that for the public?
I don't have any comment about that right now.
Okay, well, I would respectfully ask you to consider it and to ask around and look around. You don't have to go far. Most, every town surrounding New Brunswick has recorded and published recordings. Most of them use YouTube to publish them. Many even offer a live video feed of the meetings, and it's, you know, obviously within the capabilities of the district here to do the same for those thousands of families that would benefit from being able to pull up these videos and see what's going on here. And yeah, I would respectfully ask you to consider it and to, at your next meeting, speak about it and potentially even introduce a resolution to change things and start doing that. Is that something you would be willing to do, to at least make it an agenda item and talk about it at the next meeting after looking into it?
I don't have any comment about that right now.
Okay, well, that's a shame. I hope the other board members will take my words to heart and help move the district into the twenty-first century. It's high time that these meetings be recorded and be shared by the district. It's a public service that we do at New Brunswick today, but I think that the district should really be doing it for the benefit of everyone who cares about these schools. So thank you for hearing me out, and best wishes, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you.
Next, we have Linda Stork.
Linda Stork of Mark Millard. First of all, thank you to Mr. Ortiz for your years of service, and also to the brilliant performers that did such a stirring and fitting tribute musically. That was, that was really good. And also congratulations to all the sustainability winners. Wow. A lot of positive things here tonight. And I agree, it would be great if people could access it by way of some of our, you know, modern technology, which, you know, isn't even the more advanced technology that would be used to let, particularly for families that have young kids, it's just not practical to be able to, you know, come out in the nighttime. But what I wanted to ask about, excuse me, the one hundred and twenty-four suspensions does not seem to be improving. So I would, I'm wondering if there's a split between medical and high school, with the middle school having a new kind of way to address the suspension problem of school reform. Maybe the middle school improved, and maybe would be something that could be replicated in high school, I don't know, but I'm just concerned that it's still, still so high and also that the interim placement, the instruction and program was the only popular area, and it actually went down since the initial placement on the QSA. So the resolution F-E at the table has had the plan to address that. Well, I'm concerned that the initial plan, which has been in place for a year, actually resulted in, you know, four percent point drop. I would be interested to see the plan going forward. It's not actually attached, it says attached here too. Is there a way that the public will be able to see the plan?
Well, it'll be posted, yeah.
It'll be posted on the website?
Yes.
Okay, so, and so how would, where would it be on the website?
It will be on the curriculum and instruction department.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Everybody have a great holiday.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Next up, we have Janessa Ortiz.
Good evening, everyone. So I won't speak here, I'm gonna try to read through it without getting any questions. It is an honor to stand here today to celebrate my father, Benny Ortiz, as he returns from the Board of Education after twenty-seven years of dedicated service. Throughout his life, my father has embodied the value of community service, of principal people still in need in my service. He has always believed that true success lies in uplifting others, and his work on the Board is a testament to that philosophy. During his remarkable tenure, my father championed initiatives that reflect his deep commitment to students and their futures. Recognizing that every path to success is unique, he advocated the implementation of trade school options for students who are non-college-bound, ensuring that they too have the tools and opportunities to thrive. This was not just a policy decision, it was a statement that every student's potential matters. But my father's contributions didn't stop there. With his love for music, he was instrumental in the creation of the Student Jazz Ensemble, a program that has enriched our schools and provided a creative outlet for young musicians. He believed that education isn't just about academics, it's about fostering passion, creativity, and joy. As a father, he taught me the importance of standing up for what you believe in, even when it's not the easiest path. As a board member, he exemplified that by consistently funding the futures of students first. Dad, your legacy will live on in the lives of students, in the lives of the students you've empowered, the programs you've helped to create, and the community you've so self-listened served. On behalf of everyone here, thank you for your tireless dedication and unwavering belief in the potential of every student in the city of New Brunswick. You've made a difference, and we are so proud of the legacy you leave. Congratulations on your retirement, you've earned this moment. Thank you.
Next up to speak, we have Carmen Natanés.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share a few words about Benny Ortiz. My name is Carmen Natanés, and I met Benito about forty years ago. He's one of the first residents of New Brunswick that I'd met while I was attending New Brunswick University. I was introduced to Benito by his cousin, who today is my husband. Right from the moment I had met Benito, I could tell how proud he was of being a New Brunswick resident. He shares so many stories with me about his great city and the love for the city, and a lot of discussions we've had about the city and about his commitment to the city. He has such great pride in being a New Brunswick resident. He was active in many civic organizations, but one thing always stood out, education. This topic was very dear to him, so it was no surprise to me when he was elected to the Board. And what a great election to his alma mater, Volk's Deep Cross, right? I thought it was a perfect fit. His passionate dedication and commitment to this Board, his staff, his children alike, is something that I am very proud to say that he has truly a hundred percent, given a hundred percent of himself. And I would have never ever imagined that this journey with us lasted almost three decades. Way to go, Benny. You have been a role model for generations of New Brunswick Public Schools students. You have been a very objective, fair, and strong-willed individual, always seeking solutions for what is best for the staff and children of the city, not just short-term or quick fixes, but a decision with sustainable longevity. It brings me great pleasure that, to know that someone here and here to my heart has contributed close to three decades of service to help give children and staff the best resources available in the hopes of a future that we all can all be proud of. I have always saw Benito in higher standards, and because of this, I chose him to be my son's grandfather, him along with his wife. Benny, as you end your journey here today, be proud, for you have left a mark. Thank you so much for being who you are, for your love, and for your commitment. Thank you so much, Benny, God bless you.
Lastly, we have Rebecca Escobar.
Good evening, Ms. Park. Good evening, what a night it is. It is a pleasure to be here this evening, not only as the city council president, but also as the mother of a student that graduated from the New Brunswick Public School system. What a great way to show our love to a little, you know, there's so much that I would say that has already been said, but I just have to say my heartfelt gratitude. Congratulations on your retirement, your dedication to our children, your vision of this Board, and your commitment to our schools and to our community is greatly appreciated and had very, very deep impact in New Brunswick. Thank you for the twenty-seven years. It sounds easy, but it's not. I know that at times it was difficult, but I thank you for giving twenty-seven years and for being such a great advocate for our students, for our kids, for our community. Best wishes on your next journey. I know that you'll be forward to rest, rest in parentheses, because I know you'll be working, doing other things, but I wish you the best on this new journey. God bless you. Gracias.
That concludes all public comments.
Benny, for the first time we met, it's been, it's been a fun time, Benny. I'll be honest with you. But on a serious note, we always worked together to accomplish a lot of the things that we presently have today. And with the help of the Board that we have right now, and the original Board when we first came on, we, we held that, that same type of attitude to work together to make changes in Brunswick schools. I'll miss Benny because he's my partner, he's still my partner, no offense, Rosie. We're like mini-me. Benny is the me and I'm the mini. But we have a good time and we get a lot of things done. So Benny, I will miss you, but I know I'm gonna still see you. I'll miss you on the Board. But Benny is a phenomenal young, young man, he's younger than me. He brings a lot of insight, and as a result of that, that was just his makeup, okay? He believed in doing the right thing, and he speaks his mind. Sometimes I have to hold him back, but that's cool. But he's gonna be really missed. Okay, so I love you, and I wish you the best, even though I'm gonna see you tomorrow.
If anyone has seen Mr. Spencer and Mr. Ortiz together, they have a beautiful friendship, so. Mr. Ortiz, would you like to do a bit?
Moving to item number thirteen, the president's report. We've seen some of the conversations that we've been having at the local level in New Brunswick in Sustainability New Jersey, seeing how the impact that's happening inside the classrooms and how it's impacting communities. I do want to report briefly a conference that we recently, three members went to Q, which stands for the Council of Urban Board to Education. And particularly, I want to talk about an equity workshop that we attended. And when we talk about some of these national conferences, we see people from other parts of the nation. And I wanted to, tonight, to talk about New Jersey and how it positions itself at the national level. So seeing and hearing some of the stories when we talk about equity and the work that New Brunswick has done in terms of equity work, and not only with teachers, but also with the students, and talking about Chromebooks already being part of a plan that was been years in the making and that has been completed. I wanna, I wanna end today's report with New Jersey being such a hopeful space of equity and really talking about, and I know we talked a little bit about during the student support services about what the nervous, some of the nervousness that's happening at the political and the national landscape, but I want to say that New Jersey being sort of like a hopeful space about equity and that here we have leaders that are ready to talk about and keep the human dignity at the forefront of those conversations. So with that, I want to say happy Thanksgiving. I hope you have, get some time to just kind of be a fido and do nothing. So moving to item number fourteen, the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion for resolutions eight, eight H?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item number fifteen, the finance committee report by Mrs. Patricia Varela, chairperson.
Good evening, everyone. The finance committee met and reviewed the finance report. Can I please have a motion to accept? Can I please have a motion to accept the number nineteen, finance report?
Sure.
Second.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, abstain on page twenty-six.
Noted. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes, abstain on page eight.
Noted. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, abstain on page seven.
That was page seven?
Seven, S E E N.
Thank you, noted. Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes, abstain on pages seven, fifteen, and twenty-one.
Noted. Ms. Sevilla?
Yes, abstain on page thirty-four, please.
Noted. Motion approved.
Moving to item number sixteen, resolution for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of New Jersey S A ten four dash six provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as the following: one, personal matters, and two, matters of paternity, client privilege. Now therefore be resolved that the, at whose set subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Now please have a motion for closed session.
Sure.
Second.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Thank you.